I have the most incriminating emails from Mary ever.
How about the fact you can argue everything out there, no matter what the it was?
Listen, you get it on your top.
It's coming off that me like that.
We need to unincorporate.
You think Russ works for me? Things are about to get extremely heated in Otter Creek. Tempers are flared and things are about to get out of control.
Who would I ask about that question if we can be unincorporated before we have this meeting? I would need to ask that you said there's somebody I could ask.
The taxes.
That you didn't want to give the answer to. So who would I reach out to if?
For the taxes, that would certainly be.
No, for the unincorporation.
For the unincorporation.
To see if we're allowed to do it. You said you knew the answer, but you didn't want to give it. So who would I ask that?
Well, it would be. Partner. Excuse me right now. I could tell you before the end of the. Secretary of State, excuse me.
Jason Whisker too, or not?
No, no, no. When you're talking about incorporation, because you're incorporated with the state.
Right.
And so that would, so that would definitely be.
So I want to ask that question first before we go setting up a workshop to see if we're allowed to do it. Because obviously if we're not allowed, that would be a waste of time. So, okay, so I'll get in touch with them, answer that question. And then we'll look into doing that for sure and we'll get back.
I would like to know what, I would think the city needs, I think the city would get involved.
The pros and cons.
Right. I mean, if something, if there's that many people that are having questions about it, I certainly think we need to find out.
The town's been talking about unincorporating. And I shared that there's a dollar to be actually safe if they do. But who cares what I think? Let's find out what the tax assessor says. I have the official email documentation right here. The town of Otter Creek is going to be shocked. I've created a spreadsheet containing all the properties in Otter Creek. Less the government and the churches, which are tax exempt in 2023. By the way, I have everybody's taxes right now in this spreadsheet. Okay, the challenge is adding the fire assessment in, which the county will collect if you do unincorporate. Then I've subtracted the proposed OC property tax, which no longer would be paid. Residential fire assessment is easy enough since it's 129 per dwelling. Vacant land is $12. Commercial, however, is assessed by square footage of the building and varies based on the type and use. I calculated them as well as I could using similar properties in the county to arrive at the same square rate. The RV park is an estimate since the county handles the RV parks. It appears from this spreadsheet that 100 out of 136 taxpayers, that's 73% of the residents of Otter Creek, would see a decrease, that's lower, that's less, in their property taxes. If Otter Creek were to unincorporate, please let me know if you have any other questions. You want to know how much they'll decrease? Let's take a look at some. Every single parcel of property is in this spreadsheet. And I can tell you exactly whose property will decrease and increase. Remember, 73% of the residents, their taxes will decrease. The biggest tax break, somebody will save $1,069.70. I'm not going to tell you who, but I am going to tell you what some of the residents will save that you actually know already. Vice Mayor Zim would save $179.55. According to this, John Crook and Lynette are actually paying taxes. Or he doesn't know they're a 501(c)(3). So if they were paying taxes, they would actually save $169.62. So when that 501(c)(3) status gets taken away from them, you know what? Unincorporating is going to save them some money that they don't have anyway. Vice Mayor Zim has quite a few parcels, all of which he would be receiving a tax break on. Guess who else gets a tax break? Russ the Sus gets a $67.67 tax break by unincorporating. And remember, he's against higher taxes. He's got to be all for unincorporating. You think Russ works for me? Our bookkeeper, Belinda, she actually decreases by 67, 67 as well. I know Mary Mary Mathis scary, but she gets to decrease by $30.43. I don't care if you can't do math or not, that's not a bad deal. Don the Con, he gets the savings of $20.25. Remember, he still owes me 50.
I'll bet you $50 it'll pass any, any test you put it through.
Councilmember Gail gets a tax break of $681.67. I think I hit all of the council members. Don, Gail, Zim, Russell. Okay, there's the campground as well. The campground gets a tax break. And as a matter of fact, they're in the top five of the biggest tax breaks. And low and behold, we never thought this. George and I actually thought we'd pay more taxes. We're actually in the top five biggest tax break as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would need the initial inquiry into whether it's feasible or not to be part of the workshop. So that everybody would hear it at the same time. Instead of making one phone call earlier to say, well, well, they said we couldn't do it, so we don't need a workshop. If they came up, they can answer those questions for you. And everybody would have to answer it at the same time. If the answer is no, then everybody knows it at the same time. If the answer is yes, then there's a further discussion on whether you want to do it or not.
Yeah, if it's that easy to get hold of anybody and get any questions answered, absolutely. But so far, my experience of getting any questions answered seems to be a joke. Because you try to call people and email people and they don't ever get back to you on anything.
Allow me to introduce to you the Strong family, a highly respected family in the Otter Creek area. That owns quite a bit of land. Now, you're going to see in context of what's to follow, a personal battle between boundaries. As a matter of fact, let's take a look here. This is Vice Mayor Zim's property. But in his property, this red line here, comes this odd triangle shaped. And guess who owns it? It is the Strong family. And Vice Mayor Zim has some plans for his property. No doubt, the Strong family has some plans for theirs as well. Even if the plan is to do nothing. But who's in the midst of this battle? Who's throwing fuel on the fire? As usual, in the past, in the present, it's Russ the Sus. You're thinking wardrobe change, scene change. Jeremy, where are you? Well, we are actually in Washington DC right now. That's how important this issue is to us. We're seeking a more perfect union.
Well, yeah, I agree with you and that would be great. And I wonder all the time, how are anybody supposed to get answers from these people who don't respond to anything? It's crazy.
Your first statement was just to find out if it's, if the town is eligible to find, to do that. That's what she was talking about, finding out not the answer to do it all. Was finding out what the eligibility is for the town to unincorporate. And if it is an option, then we should have a workshop to discuss it.
The town has Articles of Incorporation. And they're incorporated with the, with the state, with the Secretary of State. So you look at your Articles of Incorporation, see why it was incorporated. Likewise, what do you do to get out of incorporation? That part is all, is all dependent on your Articles of Incorporation and what allowed you the, the status to be incorporated.
I have a copy of the Articles of Incorporation. One of the very first things I did when I got to the town and I saw how dysfunctional it was. I asked Mary for it, she didn't give it to me. She still to this day has not given it to me. We're in a public records request and a lawsuit. I still haven't received it from her. Another council member gave me a copy that they had. And I digitized that entire thing, the bylaws, all the resolutions, the ordinances. And I put it into a PDF so that everybody in the town could have a copy who needed one. Very few have actually read it. Now, I can tell you that the town was incorporated because of water. It all had to do with getting water and receiving money for water. There is nothing that says anything about unincorporating. That's typically not in your constitution, your bylaws, your ordinances, your resolutions. It's not in your charter. Remember that your charter is about building. It's about putting something together, it's about incorporating. The charter never takes into account that a town is going to get so decrepit and so dysfunctional and so behind that they would ever have to unincorporate.
Yeah, because our daddy's dead and gone, so he don't know. He's the one that incorporated it.
That's Joyce, another one of the famous Hudson girls, and you can't help but love her. And I have no doubt, when her daddy actually incorporated the town of Otter Creek, it was out of love for the people and the residents. But today, what we have is this massive power struggle over a tiny town. Who cares? It's perceived power. It's not even real power. The people don't need a fight over power or boundaries or anything along those lines. And they maintain their name, Otter Creek. They live the same, Otter Creek. It's just removes all of the corruption or the people that are fighting to be in a position or place of power for corruption.
Did anybody else have?
I just want to follow up on that. I did, I understood what, what, the way it was put forward. I just think that because it was a topic of conversation and people want to know, is it, and if it's not, why not? All of those questions should be answered in that workshop. So you ask a question during the workshop, all of those questions get answered so everybody can see and understand.
So what you're saying basically is if I got a no back, we should still have a workshop so that we can discuss. Okay, I understand for sure. Yeah, we can do that.
This is one of the wonderful things about Madam Mayor Therese, transparency. She actually shares information and she gathers information. And she wants information from the people, from the residents. She's open to communication. Whereas before, under Russ the Sus, he'd throw you out. He'd bring in the sheriff to try and remove you. I had to literally sue the town to get the information that is legally supposed to be public for the people. Madam Mayor Therese, she says, come on in. I want to hear what you have to say. And let's be open and honest with one another. Huge difference in our town today.
And yours?
I'm not saying I want to or I don't, I just need it. Information, you want information. And there's a lot of people who I've been talking about and want information and that's understandable.
The, going back to saying to you the new business was building officials. We talked about building officials. We've got quotes from Safe Built and we've got universal engineering doesn't really want to participate. And we got Jack out of Cedar Key. Jack is like a hundred dollars an hour. And no charge to the town. It's a hundred dollars an hour and it's based on as neat basis. Someone applies for a permit, we spin it up to him, he does the process, he does the inspections. And he passes or fails it and he moves it forward. Now, there is some cost for the town. So that, you know, it needs to be, the fees need to be accordingly. A percentage rate over the costs so that the town can cover their paperwork and miscellaneous stages.
Vice Mayor Zim is currently talking about a building official or a permit. Okay, if I want to build something, then I need a permit to actually build that. Who gives me the permit? Well, it used to be in the interlocal agreement that the county would take care of that. Now, since the interlocal agreement is separating, it looks like the town of Otter Creek is responsible for that. So there are many people who have said that. What are they saying I'm trying to build in Otter Creek and do to Otter Creek?
A lot of stuff that makes zero sense to me, which is not true.
Okay, alright.
So whatever conspiracies are out there, it's just not true.
I don't even know, they're saying I'm trying to build everything.
Tube Town is one.
So you name it, if you're going to build it, you got to have a permit for it, okay? So for example, in Otter Creek right now, who I know is building, our neighbors Brian and Tina are building a garage. I know that Vice Mayor Zim, as he's going to talk about here, he wants to build an RV park. Other than that, well, I know John Crook and Lynette are absolutely not building anything. But you know what? It's a shell thing. It's appropriately named, right? But to build, you got to have somebody there to say yes or no and guide you along the way.
I think Jack is the way to go because Safe Built is similar in prices. But their, their fees are, wind up being triple or three times as much as, as the county was charged when the time was over.
Yeah, because you're paying them whether you use them or not. Where the other one, you're just paying when you use them.
Right, just the only one we need to use them. It's not, so it might be a cost to the town, it might be a fee for the town. The town will actually make a little bit of money off of it. Some things, there will be some impact fees that we could include eventually, once we can find out what those things were. They'll qualify for that, so the town could, have, build reservoirs of money for certain things. Impact fees would be like water, for people that haven't paid water all this time around the town, people who have. There's certain things that can come into play there. My suggestion is to go with Jack, which is the most effective for the town.
What we're being told is the town of Otter Creek can bring on a building official and they won't be on the town of Otter Creek's salary. No money's going out of the accounts to them. It would be on a per build, per person basis. Let's say I want to build my new house on my 70 acres. Well, I have to pay that inspector. The inspector isn't drawing a salary from the town of Otter Creek per se, Town Hall. It's drawing, or they are drawing their salary from the person who's going to build. In other words, no financial strain whatsoever on the town of Otter Creek's residents.
Is that guy being excited tonight? I like to look at that a little bit.
I think we've already talked about it once already. I think it needs to be decided tonight, our time is, we won't have time to get back to him before the county. It's not a cost for the town. I'll make a motion that we use Jack. It doesn't cost the town a dime. The town actually profits off all the services that you need to provide them.
I need to know more about.
We're hiring a building official and an inspector that's paid for by the permitting fees, not by the town. The town has no cost. Safe Built, the fees are, we have to pay them $200 for every inspection. We have to pay them $200 every time we turn around for something. The time they, they don't, they don't have a minimum, or they do have a minimum, it's $200, it's two hour fee on everything they do. And when you go back through to the city of Bronson, I think it's Bronson and Wilson are using them, is that correct? Is he using Safe Built?
I know Bronson is, Chief one might be too.
Chief one is. Yeah, and both of them are seeing how expensive, how much more expensive that is versus accounting fees. Most economic fees are through Jack out of Cedar Key. He'll come down one day a week and do what he needs to do. And it's just like Bronson does, and they got their stuff scheduled one day a week.
I believe Bronson's is paying $20,000 to $25,000 a year for their services. So if the town can afford to throw that money out the window.
There's no, our town has no fees to pay for this. This guy is working, he's been working with Cedar Key real nice. He's worked in the building department through Duba County for quite a long time. I don't see where it's an option for us to be paying $25,000 versus paying nothing for a building official. I don't see what the questions are.
Yeah, it seems like a no brainer.
Well, I'd like to get some more information personally myself, it's kind of one inside of me. I don't think, I think we should probably table this until our next meeting.
I can somewhat understand how Don can say he's blindsided. Because Russ the Sus actually had a letter from the county saying that they were separating the interlocal agreement for months upon months upon months. And he told no one, nobody, until a new administration came into the office and shared it with the residents. Now, this isn't the first time that Russell has tried to keep information from Don. As a matter of fact, I'm going to show you a key email where Mary Mary and Russ the Sus locked Don out of a meeting, which is illegal. I'll post this after I read it as well. This is an email from Mary to Attorney Warm. And it simply says this. Councilman Severino heard there was a meeting and Russell told him he could not be a part of it. It was not a public meeting. He came in anyway before I could lock the door. Russell and Mary kept a council member illegally out of a meeting. Darlene Hudson, one of the famous Hudson girls. Next door to Town Hall, heard the conversation between the mayor and the councilmen and has told everyone that we violated the sunshine law. Because you did and you belong in jail. Then Mary asked Attorney Warm, so where do we go from here? Do we post the minutes? Mary de Groot. Because now there was an official secret meeting that Don wasn't supposed to know about, but now Don does know about. They broke sunshine law. Now Mary goes, oh no, we're busted, I have to post the meeting minutes now, right?
Somehow, what information are you looking?
Well, the whole, the whole situation, you know, like I'm not really that well versed on what he's talking about. I'm getting some ideas, but certainly we can investigate this and educate ourselves on exactly what's going on. We can make a qualified decision.
Yes, Mr. Fuller?
So you're otherwise not be voting on something we don't know of, or each side decision.
My question is, are all these things in writing? Because such a proposal should be in writing and because you also need to know qualifications for the different people.
Mr. Fuller, I'm actually glad you bring that up because Attorney Warm brought that up as well. Uh, to Mary, and he said this in the email. Remember, I have 6,000 emails. Let me tell you, I've got stuff that's been said by Mary and by Attorney Warm and by Russ about the people. Everybody, everybody in Otter Creek, and they are going to be not happy. So particularly Attorney Warm says this. Russell was treating Albert, who appeared to be a very nice and well qualified individual as though he's a municipal resource of some kind. Does Albert in fact occupy any position in Otter Creek? Or is this something that is planned? It's going to need to be established clearly for us and for the public if and when he assumes a position of some kind and what his authority is or will be. It wasn't the subject of a meeting and it's a matter of diplomacy. I didn't bring it up. What Attorney Warm is saying is, hey, I'm trying to say this secretly because Russell's doing things wrong. But we certainly need to know how he fits into the scheme of things. And you better believe it, it was a scheme. Reply from Mary to Attorney Warm. Yes, we do intend to avail ourselves of Albert as our building officer. But I'm not quite sure how we're going to accomplish that. Oh, by the way, I have the most incriminating emails from Mary ever. How they targeted me and I was the only one that was ever charged anything different in the town of Otter Creek for water. Completely, totally illegal.
I would say that the council needs to read those and see before they vote, see how, which is.
It's actually not, an out of it, it has to be voted on. We've brought, this is an out of it, that's, we're not hiring the man, and payroll through the town. This is a service he's providing to the town and being paid through for our permitting fees. So it's, it's basically the, it's, this is an option that's free for the town by using this service versus using Safe Built, which is going to be a $25,000 fees from the town that we use. All the others had, you know, a higher fee than that. It was just not even considered even pursued, even getting close.
How many people would it really affect? Who's building? It only matters who's building.
That's right, that's why we got somebody that would do it based on, based on our needs, not charging us fees.
Just him. Just him, I'm done.
The only reason I said that is just because somehow the town needs to know the qualifications of the different people offering services. Because it may be a cheaper option, but is the person qualified? And maybe very qualified, but somehow they need to know.
And who's getting scared by that thing in the corner? I heard if you say her name three times in a mirror, she snatches you if you're a child.
By the way, when, when I was, when I was, when I was suspended, so to speak, before I resigned, you said there had to be an ordinance associated with the hiring of an individual. And so.
Well, at that time, it was being run through the county, so there wasn't a need for you. So that made no sense.
Well, and you were hiring, and you were hiring out town budget, not out of, off the permit fees and all the other things. You were paying out the town budget.
Well, to, to, to show you correctly, even though I'm definitely not asking for the job back. But the fact is that I was basically doing the town a favor because the fees for that, the fees for that was actually coming out of the application fee.
I'm not sure I completely comprehend and understand what Mr. Fuller's trying to say. He's saying the fees for his position were paid out of application fees. So if application fees, let's say it was $200 for a permit and then went to Town Hall and then Town Hall paid him $50 an hour from that application, I can understand if that's what he's trying to communicate. But he was still being paid through Town Hall. What they're saying is no money is going to flow through Town Hall. You are going to pay directly to the building operator, officer, whoever it is. You're going directly through them. No money flows through Town Hall. Not only that, Mr. Fuller was paid $50 an hour. Again, flowing through Town Hall, which was an expense. And you're going to hear here in a moment, he's going to say he had nothing to do with permitting. We're talking about permitting. And I can't believe that he actually had nothing to do with permitting. As a matter of fact, I think there are some jobs that if I did a records request, I bet I would find his name on the permitting. So I'm kind of up in the air right now. I definitely respect the man. He deserves honor in the way that he served the town. And I think he was used corruptly by corrupt individuals, by Russell and by Mary. But at the same time, I don't believe 100% that it's coming out of his mouth. Which is the same as everybody else in that room, no matter what my relationship is with them. George, what do I tell you all the time?
To take everything with a grain of salt, no matter who it comes from.
And that's Otter Creek in a nutshell.
And that's what you're proposing now, is that the fees, the fees come out of the application fee. And so you're, you're, you're doing the same thing with this person that you were doing with me. But now I was planning, I was not building, I was planning, which is quite different. Because building specification comes out of, out of a building department. But planning comes as a result of the land development regulations that the town adopted along with the comprehensive plan. And so these are two different positions.
These are two different positions. You have planning, which Albert says he was a part of, and building, which is permitting. So I'm not sure how this conversation came about, not that I actually understand the flow still. And I also think that Albert crossed over into permitting and building as well. But I believe he was placed there corruptly by Russell. You're saying, Jeremy, you can't just say that and not give us proof. Listen, I have 6,000 emails of proof. And I'm not going to show them all in this video. I have more than enough proof.
And you gave, there should be your qualifications in the file in here somewhere, is that true?
Well, the qualifications that they asked for, yes. And I was asked to do it actually on a temporary basis, but.
Was asked to do it on a temporary basis, so we're all on the same page. To shut down the progress of the expansion of the RV park, period. And it was a personal fight again. It was a power struggle between Russell and the owner. That's what it always is in Otter Creek. Russ the Sus and Mary Mary Mathis scary literally used the town's residents' money to go out on a personal vendetta and a witch hunt. And I will be showing all the emails in the future, the near future, that prove everything I'm saying.
I don't see, I, I see where you were kind of checking, but I see no other paperwork for you.
Was it voted on at a board meeting?
It was voted on at the board meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just confusing because at that point there was an interlocal agreement with the county, so I didn't know what they needed.
He didn't have nothing to do with what the county was doing. He was doing zoning and land development regulations.
But nevertheless, all I'm saying is that you probably need to look at qualifications before you make a decision. It should be written qualifications opposed to qualifications that are, that are spoken by any one person.
Make a motion with tables, make the meeting and get some, get some stuff.
There's already a motion with tables. Make a motion adjourn.
What do you know, Don the Con actually beat Russ the Sus to the adjournment motion this time.
Make a motion adjourn. There is a joint motion table, board position. Jack was also recommended by David, I believe, the county department. They highly recommended that he comes through because he's done, he went in to see the key and took it over. And you see what see the key is, it's major, major divvied than us and a lot more there. They are much more stringent building codes there than we are here, all the way around. They are definitely more...
I agree, Russell. Let's get it in writing and bring it back. What about you, Don?
We...
Okay, so we'll table that till the next meeting and you guys can get the things in order. Yes, sir.
Are you taking estimates again from other people so you can compare it? Or you're just going with the one that...
No, we've done that. We've done that. These are the only two that's giving any reasonable numbers.
Do you know anybody else?
One of 25,000, one of the junk costs we've had.
He's getting...
One of them, the cost comes out of the payment fee?
Correct.
So we don't see any problems on that at all.
Well, the town oversees about, I think the town should charge about 20% of whatever the services are so the town can cover their paperwork.
I don't live here, but I'm just, I've been, I'm a builder and I've been through all this.
I think the town should, has to break some money on it because we gotta handle the paperwork of it and the records of it. And so it would be foolish not to have a fee that, the percentage that the town gets off of that. So it's actually something that brings in revenues to the town versus... But again, it has to be on an as-need basis. Everybody wants you to hire them on the demand of weekly and monthly stuff that we don't have.
Why pay 25,000 when you can get it for free and make a little bit of money off of it?
Seems logical.
Seems like the way to get it. And I don't see another reason why not.
Did you have a comment?
I wanted to ask about, first I wanted to commend Belinda, you've been doing a great job. I know what you've been faced with and it's amazing what you've done and that you basically have saved the town. Between you and Therese, amazing work.
This can't be emphasized enough, the value, the indescribable value of these ladies in the office. And I'm gonna throw Deanna in there as well, because she was helping temporarily. And they have taken a sunken ship that has hit rock bottom and they've brought it back up. And it blows my mind what they've done. Literally blows my mind what they've done. And you can see in Russell's face in all of these meetings, he had no clue what was supposed to happen. Mary had no clue what was supposed to happen. And these guys are learning on the fly, literally being baptized by fire, and they're figuring it out. That's how smart, that's how good, that's how amazing these ladies are.
Zim, I want to compliment you too for fixing the water plant, or we would've been out of water overnight. You've been up there, out there at 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night, doing things while everybody's in bed asleep. And I commend you for that. That's giving back to the town.
Yet again, I'm in full agreement. We need people who actually care about people. Do you realize the residents of Otter Creek had water and they didn't even know Vice Mayor Zim was out there making sure that they had it? And it was never a care for them. He took care for them without acknowledgement, without accolade. We can't thank him enough.
And one last thing. Some of the signs around town, I realize this may be F dot, but some of them are necessary and they're cluttered and they're not, they're not kept up. Mainly the truck route signs. Like, why would you want a truck to come in here? You want it to stay on 19 or 24. We don't have delivery service to the clam jack anymore. We don't have these things for truck routes to come through the town. I've seen trucks come in and turn around because they can't even get down Commissary Road because of the tree grove. So can we get rid of those signs? Let's say truck route this way. Children playing when we don't have children except at the schoolhouse. There's just some signs that don't make sense.
We can look into that and there are some that are leaning and need to be cleaned up, or we can look into that. I know a letter was wrote, I believe in 2014, to...
In reference to this.
In reference to those truck route signs, but I don't know what the result of that letter was because of the filing system here. So all we found is that letter, but we can re-approach it and look at the different signs and certainly fix the ones that are leaning.
They've just been neglected.
Yeah, so we can put that on our list of to do's.
Thank you.
Did anybody else have any comments or questions?
Just speaking on what you said, right there on Commissary Road as well, there's one that's been there for, I don't know, probably eight years or so, and it's one that used to say 25, but Frank Watson, who's dead now, he went and painted over it and turned it into a one, which he knows about. So, but yeah. But it was a 25 that Frank, who wasn't a part of the board or anything himself, literally went out there and painted over.
It's 15 over by me. When you come off the highway, it's 15.
But are the signs of decrease or are they the county? Because the county is the ones that changes signs and puts new signs.
I personally don't know, so I haven't looked into that.
We have a sign department at the county that does nothing but signs.
Signs.
A sign department.
County does them. And they take care of the certain streets, but some of the streets we have to pay for them.
But we're only got one street.
Well, there's other streets, but there is, they're not paid. But the signs are, what signs aren't in counties, we have to pay.
But the county owns everything except this road right here.
One road.
Right, which is the road stopping that sign.
They own this one road.
But it still needs to be replaced.
Yeah, because everything else the county owns except one road. They only own this road right here. The city owns that road.
Signs aren't, they're not gonna be charged as...
Well, I know that, but I was just saying, you know...
They'll replace most of them.
If we call the county, they should come and replace our signs.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
I've asked about the RV site signs too. The blue ones with the directional arrows, you can get them for 19 and 24. But he told me to wait. And it's been a couple of years I haven't been back.
Okay, so you're still waiting?
Yeah, so we're still waiting, I guess. But that'd be another question to ask, since you're putting in a park, just campground directional signs?
Yeah.
I don't think they were, they're not very big.
Was there anything else? Signs, signs everywhere, signs.
Well, signs that you need. Keep signs we don't need.
Okay, so we're done with that. We'll check it out. Anything else?
I have a question. I've been away a couple of months and there's some construction on the third street. I saw some leveling and dirt and all that, but is this the place to ask for that? Ask what's going on there or not?
This is where the meeting really gets into a personal issue of boundary wars. Vice Mayor Zim and the Strong family. And maybe the reason why Albert Fuller is actually there protecting the family boundaries. He's, from what I can tell, he does not own any property in Otter Creek. But he has family ties that still owns property in Otter Creek. And yeah, I do believe Russell is requesting him to be there. And I do believe he's on that side of Russell. And I don't think there should be sides. There shouldn't be a YouTube side, there shouldn't be a Russell side, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be sides. Decisions should be made for the good of the people of Otter Creek. But here, this is gonna get out of control. And remember, earlier in this meeting, Albert Fuller was very clear on what should be said, how it's said, it's the guidelines and the rules of meetings, and yet he does not peep up in regards of this. Well, he does say things. And why didn't he say anything when he was on, sitting at the table as the planning individual officer with Russell? Not a single word, ever. He saw more dysfunction come out of Russell. You saw him at the table like this, and he never said anything.
Yeah, that's my place right there. I plan on building an RV park. We brought in dirt and leveled it and all that stuff and it looks ironed and it was...
Well, I brought in dirt for the septic system.
Okay. All right, I'll cooperate with you.
They did a great job clearing it.
Did anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, thank y'all for coming out. Did you have something?
Yeah. In relation to, in relation to that construction, the question is, has that, is there an application in place to do that construction?
Yes, there is.
And who is it with?
I've got a reply for an RV park license through the county, through the health department. And on the, on the, all the septic systems, we're going through the health department.
But is there an application with the city of, city of, with the town of Otter Creek?
There was a pretty four years ago for me to build an RV park. And the application is waiting to go in, it's here, but obviously I'm just gonna go ahead and hire my own building officials and move forward. Because if you count, this is only to stop me from doing my construction.
What is?
So, but I will, but the applications are here. I've already come in and turned in my paperwork on building. I've got, as far as we've got, I've not gone anywhere, because I was waiting for us to buy a hiring official so that we can go to the next step through the town.
You see Vice Mayor Zim allude to Russell and Don because they voted no on moving forward with the building official. It's been Russell from the very beginning in a personal fight with Vice Mayor Zim. See, these are real people. These are real issues. This is not some made-up scripted show. This is a real place with real feelings, with real tensions. And it's gonna come out here later, outside of the building with Don and Carl. This is real. I can't stress that enough. And there's so much deep history here. And Russell's been trying to block Zim on everything. And here we go again. And Zim's trying to move the town forward. And here we go again. Blocked again, to the point where Zim goes, "I'll just hire my own building official if the town is just gonna keep trying to block me."
The first, the first step is, if not, it violates the land development regulations. And the question is, was there even a simple environmental impact study, not the big one with the four-year, four-year degree? But the fact is that in the, in the land development regulation, it states specifically that any, that any tree that's removed from, or removed from environmentally sensitive land or adjacent environmentally sensitive land over 16 inches then has to be recorded and likewise has to, has to be, has, there has to be a plan for replacing or mitigating all those, any damage done to any tree, any tree over 16 inches and...
Listen to Mr. Fuller's next sentence well. You're gonna find out why he's here at this meeting. It's not just for the Town Hall meeting. He's gonna say, "We know." Now, the question is, who's the "we"? Is it Mr. Fuller and Russ the Sus? Is it Mr. Fuller and the Strong family? Is it Mr. Fuller, the Strong family and Russ the Sus? Who is the "we"?
We know that there were tons of trees well over 16 inches. And the reason for that is the idea of both environmentally sensitive as to flooding and environmentally sensitive as to wildlife in general.
This is personal. If it wasn't, and he actually cared about the wildlife in general, he would be championing the charge, charging the champions to actually clean up Otter Creek. Not just Otter Creek, Levy County as a whole. But yet Otter Creek has garbage all over it. And who's number one? Russ the Sus. Number two, Don the Con. Mary Mary even's filled with garbage. But now we're worried about the environment and the wildlife? Let's get real here, okay? Let's clean up Otter Creek if we seriously care about the wildlife.
And if that study hasn't been done, then your application cannot be, cannot be complete. But first of all, all those things have to be done before that application is approved. And so the question is, are we going by the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations or not?
I'm clearing my property. I was told there was no permit required for me to clear my property. And we are planning on replacing some of the trees.
But there should be, there should be a plan in place in order to do that. It's not just something that you, that you say, "Okay, I think I put 10 trees in."
I cleared my property seven years ago. I've cleaned up a lot of the stuff that's been cleared. And I've cleaned, I've cleared off a little fabric portion for my septic system, which I've applied with permit to the health department.
Wasn't there a bunch of lumber on it that had been milled?
Yes.
Off of the trees?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other questions? Because I believe this discussion will continue personally after the meeting. This doesn't have to do with anything.
Well, I think those have got to do with the...
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Remember, Don wanted to adjourn the meeting earlier. Now that Zim's being put under the microscope by his neighbors, now Don thinks this is actually pertinent. But you're gonna see outside, things get extremely heated. And here's what happens. Don goes outside and Russ goes outside and they start bragging, "Man, the Strong's really put it to Zim." And tensions got very high. You gotta understand all the battles in this town, this little tiny town of real people with real feelings. And it's going to explode. And it does. And I'm gonna say beforehand, I am okay with what Carl did with Don. Carl lives across the street from Don. Carl has to live with Don. Carl has his own daughter who's been attacked by Don's dogs. Carl has to, it goes on and on and on. Carl has a family and he wants a better life for them. And Don keeps stifling that and pushing it down, and so does Russ. Listen very intently, you're going to hear Don say at the very beginning of this clip, putting him in his place. Again, emphasizing, Don hates Zim.
How about the fact you fucking argued every goddamn thing out there, no matter what the fuck it was?
Listen, you don't know what you're talking about, dude.
You keep fucking coming up at me like that.
Okay, listen, man, you don't know what you're talking about.
You fucking argued every goddamn thing, no matter what.
Because there's a reason to argue that.
10 is good for you, you stop breathing.
We're supposed to get three estimates on every time we spend money, and they get one, and they get one.
Like other people said, that y'all had done that, you and Russ and all y'all had done that for less than $30.
Dude, you're out of line and you're talking nonsense.
I'm talking nonsense?
Yes.
So, all right. Fine.
Say that again?
What? Say what again?
Whatever you said.
I said, "Yeah, I'm talking nonsense, whatever, okay." How about you go sit on your fucking porch, smoke your fucking weed and then fucking...
You don't know that, you're just surviving.
I don't know shit.
You don't know.
I'm not conceding you, motherfucker. Go down to the fucking Walker's house and boat ramp and smoke your weed with your butt head and mouth out, son.
What's that got to do with anything, dude?
See, you can't deny it, can you?
I think you should fuckin' deny it, can't you?
Very ridiculous. That's why we don't leave the city.
Thank you.
Bullshit.
You're about to hear Councilmember Gale say one of the most profound things. She says, "We need to un-incorporate." And I agree with her 100% because this town is about year-long battles and fights with each other. It's all personal. Instead of the Hudson family, who did it because they cared for one another. It's changed, and it's not a good change. But I have hope it can change back the way it needs to be.
We need to un-incorporate. I'm not on your side and I'm not on his side, but I...
I don't need anybody on my side. You just have to be on your side.
I'm on my side. My side is...
I want you to be the end end person. I want to try you work.
I am. I am. I just think that we should...
You made me feel very proud of you for nominating you to be the president.
Well, thank you.
Don goes out instigating. Then he instigates Gale as well. Remember, it was Don who said this.
Well, I make the motion that we un-incorporate.